Yeah, maybe somebody else. I did it once. And that's where I caught COVID, actually. Yeah. At that meeting. Congrats.
Good evening and welcome to the October 9th, 2024 meeting of the Sandwich School Committee. Members of the public may listen and watch the school committee meeting via livestream at www.sandwichtv.org and the Sandwich Community TV Education Channel 8. We will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start the evening with our first item, and that is public forum. Does anybody wish to be heard at public forum? Yes, sir. If you give your name and where you live, your address, that would be great.
My name is Tom Dorni. I live at 202 Main Street here in town. Before I move into my presentation tonight, I understand I have five minutes now. That's amazing.
Yes, sir. We are consistent with the board, the select board.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to extend commendations, kudos, et cetera, to the school system for the great publicity in the enterprise last week on the Finland program. It's extremely important to be a part of the larger world, and that is a living example. My topic tonight is two points, really. They're both related to each other. One point is the recent announcement from the EPA about another round of funding for clean school bus transportation and the relevant infrastructure to support that. The second one concerns the forthcoming announcement that Sandwich will be named a green community. And there is a connection between the two. The first item is, at the end of September, the government announced another round of $965 million for clean school buses and related infrastructure. On the handout that I sent around, a link to that information is right under the heading, where you can check out all of this. And the pictures and items that you see on the page in front of you and on the flip side come from that location. The timetable is on the top of the reverse side of the handout. As I said, it was announced at the end of September. We would have until January 9th to submit a proposal from Sandwich Public Schools. Between now and December, there are webinars to help people understand the process, raise questions, and get answers to those questions. The process closes in early January. The government will review all applications and make decisions on selectees for the program in May. The awarded school systems will be notified at that point as to how much money has been awarded to them. They can then put out offers to various companies, sources, et cetera, for the project of transitioning to clean transportation and the relevant infrastructure, and has until May of 2027 to actually implement that. In other words, it's not going to happen early tomorrow morning. There are a grant total of, if everything goes according to plan, there's a minimum of 32 months between now and the end of the implementation phase. Now, the second topic concerns the designation of Sandwich as a green community. The town applied for that. It will be notified officially in a few weeks that it will be seen designated as a green community. Along with that comes a designation grant, and the schools will benefit from that designation grant. The additional thing is, once the school system expends the funds that have been designated to it, it is then eligible to apply for competitive grants through the Green Community Program. In preparation to submit its application for green community status, the town had to survey all components of the town to find out how much CO2 is currently being emitted by various town segments, including the school system. One omission, because we do not own them, are the regular education transport buses. We own the vans used for special education, but we contract with an outside party for regular education, and those sources of those diesel buses of their CO2 is not included in the numbers that we had to submit. As you may remember from two previous reports that I submitted to you, the regular education buses submit significantly emit significantly more CO2. It is approximately 1.25 million pounds per year. So at this point, it means, in the three years that I've looked at this, the transportation system for the schools has emitted about 3.6 million pounds of CO2 into the atmosphere. And as you know, CO2 does not disappear. It accumulates. It's still there. We need to do something about it. An example that I have shared in the past is that each pound of CO2 occupies a 23-inch diameter ball. So you can imagine 3.6 million balls floating in the air above us, produced by transporting our students. And those balls are in your court. It is up to the school system to do something about that, and I know lots of people would cheer you on in responding to that problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dorni. Does anyone else wish to be heard at public forum? All right. The next up is our student representative. Please join us at the table.
Lisa? Did he sign in? Did he sign in? Okay. She knows the door.
Hello, everyone. Okay. How's everyone's week spend? Good? Good. I know it feels like I just saw you guys recently, but I did. But that doesn't matter. I'm here. I'm back. So we're going to start off with Forestale, because I know I always say this, but I love the youngest kids the most, so they always get my first attention.
Excuse me. Can I just ask you to slow down a little?
Oh, sorry.
Because we don't want anybody at home to miss what you're saying.
Yeah. Sorry about that, of course. I was just going to say that this week, it looks like there was National Dog Day at Forestale, because the preschool students were reading with the cat therapy dogs. And I feel like that's such, that's great for both the students and for the therapy dogs, because once they're getting, the dogs are getting the education that they deserve. And the students are also getting to spend their wonderful time with little puppies. And something else that I found really interesting was that teachers from Forestale, no, teachers from, yes, from Forestale went to Oak Ridge to go visit their past students. And this reminded me of a story. I ran a food drive one year, and it was, I would go back to Oak Ridge in Forestale to go, like, check up on how many donations we would get. And I remember how excited I would be, because the best part was to go into my teachers' classrooms and being like, hi, how are you? And it just reminded me of how Sandwich has, I feel like, done such a great job of always making sure that the students have a great connection with the teachers that they're with. And even now in the high school, I feel like there's not a teacher that I'd be like, oh, I didn't, like, I don't have a connection with them. I feel like with most of my teachers, I'm like, oh, like, I can talk to them about things, like, I'm comfortable with them. So it just reminded me of that. And I know that the students must have been so excited to see the younger teacher, though there are other teachers, and being like, oh, you remember me? And all the pictures were just everyone hugging. It was so great. And they, preschool, also had their new playground open up, which is so, like, great, seeing all the little kids being so independent and trying to navigate, like, the big monkey bars and everything around them. And it also is getting them very prepared to win the biggest tournaments, the Gaga tournaments, in Oak Ridge. So I think it's great to get them to start training so young. And Oak Ridge, there were, I know last month I mentioned the cardboard challenge, and there were many things that were seen, such as cars, dresses, basketball courts, and also guitars made out of cardboard. And it just reminds us of how we have future mechanics, designers, NBA players, and music and artists right, right under our noses. So we should keep an eye on them, whoever participated in those cardboard challenges. Also, I would advise everyone to start running right now, because the Fun Run is coming up, and everyone needs to start training. And I remember that it's hard, it's not easy, being a kid and participating in those. So Forestale has their Fun Run on October 18th, and Oak Ridge has it on October 25th. And you run around a track that they have designed for you 30 times, and all the funds at Oak Ridge, I'm pretty sure, are being used to build a garden for the kids to use, which is great. So they're running, getting exercise, which me, as a kid, did not love, but it's okay. And they're also getting to be able to build their garden, so. And lastly, at Oak Ridge, is that there's a winter clothing drive from the 4th, from October 4th, which has already started, and to the 11th. And running these drives, I feel like it's, you never realize how, like, someone, no one's going to ever show that they're in need of something, and you never know what someone's going through. So if anyone has any clothes or anything that they can, are able to donate, then it's a great cause, and I really think that everyone should, so.
Excuse me, just real quick before we go to the high school. Dr. Quinn, I just got a text from somebody at home. They're watching, and they have audio but no visuals, so I don't know if you, anything you can do to touch base with Community Television? Back to you, I'm sorry.
All right. In the high school, the peer leaders, it's like an organization that we have at the school, and it's, I think, around, like, eighty-something students, and we're working together for, like, anti-bias and anti-discrimination. And recently, we went on a ropes course field trip, which I could not tell you how much fun I had, but it has never been more humbling, because I have, I fell so many times in the beginner's course, and someone was walking this way, and I was walking that way, and I was like, oh, like, what course did you come from? They were like, oh, the Black Diamond, which is the hardest. And they're like, and they're like, oh, how many have you done? And I go, oh, I just finished the green one. It was so hard. And they're like, oh, that's a beginner course. And I was like, oh, okay. I was like, great. And they're like, how many have you done? I go, that's my only one. And they're like, oh, I did all of them. And I was like, that's not fair. You got in there before I did, so it doesn't count. Another exciting thing that happened in high school is the Finnish students came and visited, and they stayed out of their houses, which is so much fun. We, I know that they all had, like, mall days, a lot of people just hung out, and it's kind of sad, because you're with someone so much, 24/7, and then they're just gone. And obviously, we will see them again in April, which is so exciting, but it's like a sibling leaving for college, like, the initial, you're like, oh, like, I'm going to miss you. And I know, but it's great, because we all are still connected, so thank God for cellphones, because we're all staying very close. And something interesting happening at the high school is the Race to Read. So it's this bulletin board in the seventh grade hallway, and they have, like, grids, and it's like 100, 200, 300, 400. And every time a student completes a book, they go on and, like, fill in a box. So there's, like, two seventh grade teachers that are running this. It's Ms. Foley's class and Mr. Tansy's class. Mr. Tansy's class, as of last, has 61 books, and Ms. Foley's had 48 books, so Ms. Foley's students, if you're watching, you guys need to start reading more. But they, it's very, I feel like that's very motivating, because I love competition, and I know that seventh graders also must love competition, so they're probably like, I need to go, and I need to read as much, and, which is, I feel like, very smart way to get them to be involved. We also had the club fair recently, and it's been so cool to see all the different types of clubs that Sandwich Middle High School has to offer, that I never realized, like, we have chess club, we have international studies, we have Chicas for Change. We also have, like, Latin Club and all the honor societies. And I know this year, more than last, a lot of people have been more excited and, like, willing and eager to join clubs, so I think that's been great. And there's also been, there was another fun field trip, the yearbook editors went to Gillette Stadium, the Revs game. They were on, like, the sidelines, so they were, like, very close. And that reminded me that, I just wanted to say that, like, our school has a very great, like, we were also touring people from, like, Niask, and they were like, oh, like, what do you like about our school? And I was like, it's really nice having so many different variety of electives and different types of classes, because I know a lot of students have been like, oh, I took broadcast journalism, and now I'm going to major in that. Or they're like, I took yearbook, and like, I want to do something like that. Or they're like, I took a science class. It's just been, I feel like the variety of classes we have have been very helpful for students to be able to decide what they want to do in the future. And I just wanted to bring up how great that is, and how grateful the students are. So those are what I have for our schools, and as you can see, how wonderful and amazing that our, all three of our schools are, and I can't wait to see what we have next.
Any questions, comments for Shreya?
Thank you so much, Shreya. I just wanted to ask, what do you think the Finnish students enjoyed the most on their trip here?
Um, I think that they enjoyed just being in American, like, culture a lot. I know a lot of them had a great time at the football game, and just seeing our students and how they interact. I remember them saying, like, I asked them after the first day, I was like, oh, like, is this similar to how schools in Finland are? They're like, no. They're like, no one, like, small talks, like, at all? So just having, like, a person go up to them and being like, oh, how do you like it so far? They would be like, oh, good. They'd be very taken aback. So I know that they really like the friendliness that is here, and I also think they really like the fast food that we have to offer. So I know we all went out to eat a lot, so.
I saw a few Kaffee sweatshirts.
Any other questions, comments?
Just one more question about the college fair, how some of the colleges are starting to show up at the schools. Is that open just for juniors, seniors, or is it open to anybody to stop by? Do you know?
Um, I think, at the moment, it's only open for juniors and seniors. At least, that's what, like, Guidance has been promoting out. I don't remember them being open to us last year as sophomores, but yeah, I think they're only.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you very much, Shreya.
Thank you.
You bring Sun Chung to our meeting. Thank you.
Were you able to get anywhere, Dave?
We have, uh, the live feed is working on the website. Uh, there's contact that's, it's like, on the TV broadcast.
Okay. If I, if I may, someone texted me that they could not, they weren't getting the video of the stream on the television. It is streaming on the website, and we have staff reaching out to SCTV to try to troubleshoot. So back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And the next item is to act on the minutes of the regular meeting dated September 25th, 2024. Do I have a motion? To approve, that is.
I'll move to approve the meeting, the meeting minutes of a regular business meeting of September 25th, 2024.
Second. Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Five-zero. Passed unanimously. Correspondence or announcements? I have none. Superintendent's update?
Good evening, everybody. First off, I definitely, I think Shreya hit a lot of the list of some things that I can talk about. As you know, from Sunday to this afternoon, we had a team of eight educators across New England in for the decennial accreditation visit through NIASC, or the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. In my opinion, this visit went extremely well, starting with Sunday evening, as you know, the, the team's visit with you as the school committee. This afternoon, during the staff meeting, the chair of the committee, a woman by the name of Lori Greenwood, who is the curriculum director for the Georgetown Public Schools, kind of gave an overview, in very, very broad brushes. And I have to say, the overview reflects how well the actual visit went. She started her commentary that Sandwich Middle High School has met all of the five standards for accreditation and the foundational elements, which are learning culture, student learning, professional practice, learning support, and learning resources. And then she kind of gave a overview of the priority areas. If you recall, two years ago, in October of 2022, was something called the collaborative visit. And interestingly enough, Lori Greenwood, the chair, was the assistant chair for that visit. And she commented, she began her comments in talking about the tremendous growth that they've seen in the last two years at the high school. And she commended our principal, Jeannie Nelson, and the staff on the priorities specifically around the vision of a graduate, and how both the district and the school had taken some steps to make it real for students and for staff. There was also a commendation in the second priority area around completing all curriculum maps and using the UBD, or Understanding by Design, framework. The third priority area, commitment of expansion of learning opportunities, and specifically cited, was the implementation of the career innovation pathways that we've talked about a lot during the meeting. They also talked in a fourth commendation, consistency with regard to promoting a growth mindset in our students and also the staff. And structurally, a lot of growth, the formation of various stakeholder teams, and also, again, something that we've discussed here, more opportunities for students with regard to deeper learning or applied learning, where they could apply their learning in real-world to problem-solving scenarios. I think in closing her comments, she said, we've, a numerous time spoke to groups of students, and we said to the kids, if you had to give us just one or two words that describe Sandwich Middle High School, what would they be? And she repeated three words that she said time and again came up: community, opportunity, and family. And that really resonated with everybody in the auditorium when she shared those things. So as far as the, the next steps, we will have a draft of the final report in two weeks, and then it's processed by Jeannie and the staff, checking for accuracy. And then the accreditation decision and the final report from the NIAS Commission on Public Schools will be issued in March. Any questions on any of that? Bert?
Having been on three of those committees, on the NISA committees, I don't know how the vocational schools may be done differently. We were sent out into individual areas. So for example, in the vocational school, some people went into the electronics area, some people went into carpentry areas. Obviously, you don't do that in a academic high school. Did any of the staff go out to, for example, math or social studies, or was it a general, general?
It's more general now. Like, you know, you will have teachers from different content areas. However, the expectation is you're observing instruction in all different content areas.
And I know when we filed our report, and again, this might be different now, we gave recommendation, we gave commendations, which I heard quite a few, but we also gave recommendations.
Same applies.
Were there any recommendations?
There were, actually. And again, shouldn't be a, a surprise. One piece with regard to teaching and learning is continuing the work on the curriculum maps, ensuring that there's similar depth and breadth of the curriculum maps from department to department. One piece around continuing the work to ensure consistency and fairness in grading and assessment practices. And then also, with regard to thinking about the work that we've done with respect to safety and our facilities, the whole issue came up around our front foyer area, and then the concerns about wanting to have a separate entrance for the pool, knowing that conversation about people coming in after hours and literally to access the pool, going through a significant amount of the high school.
I have two other questions, but I'll wait till other members have a chance to ask.
Anybody else wish to ask?
This is outstanding, and my experience as a visitor is, there's always a way to improve. And so it's very unusual that any survey would result in no suggestions, recommendations, opportunities to improve. And I think our work with Dr. Maruscek over this last few years, continuous improvement. And I think this is just evidence of the hard work that's being done, so commendation.
Yeah. Very, very proud of Jeannie, that leadership team, and the staff on a whole.
I'm sorry, Bert. Well, Bert, you've got the floor.
Were they, were they aware of the situation we had last spring with, which caused the cell phone policy to have been generated? Were they aware of that situation?
Um, certainly, it comes up. You know, I, it wasn't specifically brought to my attention, but realize, when you have eight team members literally going nonstop during those three days and talking to every single stakeholder group, I'm sure it came up.
And did they have, did they look at the DEI situation, you know, because we've had some changes there?
Yes.
Improvements?
Yep.
Did they have any comments on that?
It didn't realize, the commentary that came up during the faculty meeting was a very, very broad overview. I would anticipate that probably some more specifics would be in the draft report.
And my last question. And my, one of my biggest concern was enrollment. Are they, was there any concern on declining enrollment?
Uh, that specifically did not come up.
All right, thank you.
Okay, my second P. Oh.
It's a quick update from Sandwich Community Television. They cannot troubleshoot the video during a broadcast, but it is streaming on the website, and you can watch the audio. So you'll just have to bear with them.
Thank you to our assistant.
I am here.
Kevin Soral. And I was just going to say thank you to everyone that is working so hard to move these improvements, and the fact students, there was a theme with the words that they said, it's awesome.
It was remarkably positive. And to that point, Tracy, just getting the ongoing feedback, Monday, Tuesday, and today, overwhelmingly positive. And, you know, I, I've had the opportunity in my career, I served on the Commission for Public Secondary Schools for six years. I probably have gone out a total of about 14 times on visits. I've chaired probably at least 11 or 12 times.
these improvements and the fact students, there was a theme with the words that they said.
Yeah.
Awesome.
It was remarkably positive.
You're correct.
And to that point, Tracy, just getting the ongoing feedback, Monday, Tuesday, and today, overwhelmingly positive. And, you know, I've had the opportunity in my career, I served on the Commission for Public Secondary Schools for six years. I probably have gone out a total of about 14 times on visits. I've chaired probably at least 11 or 12 times. To see that positivity is a really good sign for our school, our district, and our community. So I think Shreya alluded to it. Just again, I know some of you, you know, Sue and Kevin were present last Thursday for kind of the culminating project of our 12 Finnish students that visited us over the last 10 days or so, and gave presentations in the library on the work that our high school students, and Bert, I'm sorry, I forgot you, definitely can't forget you, Bert, you know, presenting on, there are collaborative projects around something known as the Sustainability Development Goals, or SDG, sometimes they're referred to as the Global Goals. Just a super positive experience. And then kind of leading up to that was kind of a cultural piece. I had the opportunity, along with Dr. Quinn, to go to Fenway Park with the kids shortly after they arrived. The Finns also spent two or three days in Boston. They went to the National Seashore, they went to Peetown, they went to the Vineyard. So just a great, great experience. And, you know, we look forward to our exchange during April vacation, going over there and continuing the relationship, because, again, these are the types of opportunities that we want for our kids.
Talking to the Finnish students and the Sandwich High School students, they all seemed like they were angels sent from heaven. In having a discussion with them, it was, you know, I can certainly, I can get along better with kids than adults, as you probably have figured out, but they were, all of them, and every last one, the Sandwich High School students were great. I did ask the Finnish students, what was, what did they like the most? And they did mention Fenway Park, and they mentioned how big it was, and, you know, the green grass, how much that impressed them. And then I asked them, what did they like the least? And they said, "You guys need to chill." And so, because they mentioned that they call their teachers by first, their first names.
Yeah.
And they said it's a little, they felt it was a little more restrictive than it is in Finland, but it was, those kids were great, absolutely great.
Yeah.
And just my impression of the day, this was more than field trips and good times and fast food. These young people were involved in serious academic work, serious research, and I think it's a model to the rest of us, because the solutions to the big problems are only going to happen with cross-global collaboration. And what, it was wonderful to see what they produced in that relatively brief period of time with an ocean between them. So it was pretty powerful.
Great.
Thank you.
So going from NEAS to Finland to the world of enrollment, I think it's always important. Last week was October 1st, and realize, that's the benchmark date that determines our funding through the state. So our October 1st enrollment is the official, official enrollment. So as I say in the background notes, it really isn't dramatically changed from when I presented this to you in the beginning of September. As a matter of fact, I think I presented to you a total district enrollment of 2,150 students. So we have one fewer student than we did towards the first week of school. Again, the class sizes also have not changed dramatically in looking at where we are K8. And this is essentially a simple calculus of looking at what is our enrollment for the grade level, and then dividing it by the number of sections. It's a little bit different for grades seven and eight, but I generally use as a rule of thumb, how many ELA and how many math sections are offered in each of those grades, and you see the numbers there. And then, I don't know if this has been shared recently, but this is looking just at the high school grades alone, nine through 12, what the average class sizes are. And as you can see, there's a decent amount of variability. I can tell you, in looking at the class sizes of your core academic classes, they're slightly larger than the averages, because we offer a rich array of electives in the content areas. And again, I think this can inform policy, this can inform budget, but because we offer the rich array of electives, in some cases, that lowers your average class size. So I think this is important data to have, particularly as we go through the budget season in January and so on. Any questions on any of that?
One brief one. What is taught in business? When I was at Sandwich High School, they taught typing. I don't think that typing is being done anymore.
No, it's not.
For some reason, I think it's not being done.
No. So if, we have a outstanding, that, all of those business classes are one teacher, a gentleman by the name of Ben Gavoni. If you've been to a football game recently, Ben is the voice of the Blue Knights. He's the PA announcer.
He's a love.
Love him.
He's a graduation speaker.
And actually, if you remember, he delivered, he was the faculty choice for our graduation speech. Poor guy was really nervous. God love him. But he's a one-man show, and he teaches like accounting, marketing classes, and so on, and is very affiliated with our DECA program.
Thank you.
And then I think, last but not least, we have our FY25 budget update. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, we have one more thing. Another, this is actually positive news, and I put this in Blue Knight highlights. We just learned this on Friday. So for our second straight year in a row, we have been named, we just found out on Friday, by the College Board as an A part of the AP Honor Roll. So realize, these are for schools across, high schools across the country that have very high AP participation rates, but also a high level of achievement. And I think I put this graphic in the packet that kind of looks at, how do you qualify to be either Silver, Gold, or Platinum designation? And it is, it's a little unfortunate in the sense that they go with whatever your lowest score is. So college culture is one of the three criteria, and college culture refers to what percentage of your class has taken at least one AP class. So for the class of 24, 59% of our kids took at least one AP. Then college credit refers to what percentage of your class got at least a three or higher. So that's 45%, almost one-half of the class of 24. And then college optimization, which is a pretty high bar, what percentage of your class took at least five APs during their high school career? 22%. So almost one out of four of our kids took five APs. So to get to the quote-unquote "gold" status, we would have to increase that 59% to 65% to get to that gold status. But I think this is a great designation. I think it's a source of pride for the middle high school, but also for our community in earning this designation.
I would say, from an equity-inclusive perspective, that college culture, 59% taking one or more, is really powerful.
Yes.
Because we are very inclusive in terms of students who want to take that, number two. The other part, the five or more, on one side, it's very commendable, and it has the opportunity to save families money on the tuition side, but these kids that take those five or more APs are also involved in everything, and I worry about
Sure.
... the pressure that these young people are on. So hopefully, those teachers are watching and listening and intervening and supporting through this process.
Yeah. It is about balance.
Yeah.
To be sure. I think, realize, there are some high schools that do put up roadblocks and put up a lot of prerequisites for taking APs. At the high school, we do not, with the philosophy, you know, a high tide raises all boats, so to speak, that you could have a kid that, you know, is not the quote-unquote "traditional" AP material, but you put them in the AP class, more often than not, they're going to live up to that challenge. So I think that's a really important point. So I think now, FY25 budget update. Michelle.
Okay. Good evening. You have the August report in front of you. In the salary area, we're a little over, and that's the effect of the negotiation sessions that we had during the spring and summer. The only area that's over right now is special education, but that's because we don't start applying the circuit breaker until quarterly journal entries in October on. And everything else is plugging along. We're getting all the regular encumbrances in place for the monthly expenditures, and everything looks good so far. Not anticipating any issues. Fingers crossed. Any questions?
No questions?
Early in the year, we'll have more as it goes.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. And that moves us to old business. Other topics not reasonably anticipated. The chair, I do not have any tonight. Moving on to new business, this spring, 24 MCAS Accountability Results. Dr. Quinn and Ms. Kirk. Brain freeze, sorry.
You're heading off on a cruise.
Not quite.
With a concise presentation, and, you know, mixed results, but also some pockets of good news, correct?
That's accurate.
Before they begin, this is my last SCTV update of the evening. But the recording with video will be on the website, Facebook, and YouTube in the morning. So you can go to bed early and get up and watch it first thing.
Thank you, Paula Johnson, wherever you are.
Take it away.
All right.
I had nothing else, sorry.
So just, we always start with the basics, or just kind of a general overview of the MCAS and the structure, while it's not new to this community, but there might be folks new to the Massachusetts maybe tuning in. So the Next Generation MCAS for students in grades 3, 3, 8, and grade 10 includes both an ELA and grades 5, 8, and 10, a Science and Technology and Engineering Administrator, administered in 5, 8, and 10. There are four performance categories: exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. And the test is completed over two sessions on computer. So quite a bit of testing for some of our students.
Two sessions per content area.
Just a couple of key terms that we wanted to hit upon, that we'll talk about through the presentation. First is student growth percentile. That compares like students, based on previous performance, and gives a relative indicator of how well a student did relative to his peers. That's usually, what you're looking for in terms of outcomes, is something in the 40 to 60, that's considered typical growth. Anything above 60 is really outstanding. Anything below 40 is an area to focus on and concern. Another indicator of overall success is student achievement percentile. That gives you an indication of where the overall grade level's performance ranks relative to other, let's just say, fifth graders, seventh grades across the state. And then finally, we have our DART comparable districts. So the state gives every district and every school, for that matter, a peer group of about 10 or so schools that look at, that have similar demographics, whether that be from low-income enrollment, enrollment size just in general, students with special needs populations, and then any of our similar populations for English-language learners. And it also takes into account if it's in an urban area or suburban area, so it tries to give us an apples-to-apples comparison. And then, as Joe alluded to, we've got a couple, so what does it look like statewide? And I think that there was a lot of conversations around recovery last year. Seems like it was a bit of a step back, so if we look at the two bullet points, Joe, if you wouldn't mind. So intentionally to continue to report based on the pre-pandemic, so using 2019 as a benchmark. And then DESI also reports out how each grade level performed relative to 2023. Statewide results indicate, again, still sluggish recovery of learning from the pandemic, including some regression, but that also could be a function of the test. So as you'll see within our results, it may be difficult to discern, how much is a function of test? As we mentioned when we were here a year ago, we had new curriculum implementations, how much of it is curriculum implementation? How much, there's a lot of different variables that go into this.
So when we're, is my mic, can you hear me through this? There we go. Wasn't close enough, I don't think. So when we're looking and reviewing the data with our educators and with the public, and we just always want to keep in mind that this is, of course, one yardstick, one snapshot in time, yet it's also a very, it's an important set of data. It's very public-facing, and it's, of course, standardized, so it gives us a good way to see how we're doing in comparison to the rest of the state. The statewide results are a bit perplexing, I suppose, given the recovery efforts, and so the, all of the information being reported from DESI about the results still being behind from where they were in 2019, I'm sure it's a frustration point, as so much time, effort, funding has gone into those recovery results. But fortunately, on a local level, in Sandwich, our achievement percentiles, our DART comparables, and our local comps demonstrated a really strong pattern of student achievement in all of the tested areas over several years. And in, I want to say, almost every area, every tested area, there might be an exception here or there, we've returned back to the pre-pandemic levels of achievement. So we're very pleased to report that, and would certainly credit our super, super dedicated educators who just went above and beyond in that 2020 and 21 school year. A highlight we wanted to point out was our SGP, our Student Growth Percentile in Math, shows really significant growth. Our achievement percentiles show strong performance relative to the state. We're in the top third in nearly every grade level in every tested area. And our science achievement is really an outstanding highlight, it's quite high across the board in fifth, eighth, and 10th grade.
And so just a couple other points that we wanted to touch upon as we set the table for the results. Again, much like it is just one snapshot in time, the MCAS represents just one indicator of the overall health and well-being of a school and a school district. So we want to make sure that we're taking this in the totality. Much like you check your blood pressure, whether it's in acceptable range, it doesn't create, it mean the totality of one's health. It's also a little bit, as I mentioned earlier, a little bit difficult to discern, to what extent was there a implementation variable? Most of our grade levels were implementing a new, either ELA or math, and in some instances, both, for the first time. But given the statewide results, it's tough to tease out what contribution gave to each. That said, on the flip side of that, now that we're entering into year two of our curriculum implementation, our teachers are more familiar, they've had professional development, for the most part, with the exception of grade three, which will be going into its first year of Ready Math, we feel like we're better positioned for 2025 and beyond. And then, the next steps is always, is, there's a nice dovetail in terms of our data-wise work. While we're going to look at this work in the aggregate, we need to continue to ensure that our subgroups, particularly our students with special needs, become the focus of the continued improvement. And I think the data-wise has been at the forefront of our conversations from a district leadership team level. And then, you know, I guess we're staying on message tonight, because so long as we're focused on continuing, continuous improvement, we'll continue to see the gains. And I think the key to continuous improvement, if I can channel my And I think the key to continuous improvement, if I can channel my inner Ted Lasso here.
We see him.
You see.
We see you.
I don't know if you've ever seen the, this scene in the pub where he plays darts, but one of the key lines, although it's not Walt Whitman, it's be curious, not judgmental. And I think the key to any of this work and the key to continuous improvement is to stay curious about what's going on, even when we're doing well, even when we're receiving commendations. Where can we get better? Where do we want to focus our time and energy? So I invite the community, teachers, and those across the Commonwealth to stay curious throughout this and other data analysis. So on to the results.
All right. So we'll start with sharing the ELA results, and you'll see four slides per content area. So the first slide here, we have the statewide ELA results for grades three to eight. Then we will move on and share our elementary performance and then our middle high school performance. But just to point out statewide, we have displayed the elementary grade levels, and then the three to eight range is that last row on the bottom. But you'll see for this past spring of 2024, that percentage represents the percentage of students statewide at each of those grade levels who performed at the meeting or exceeding grade level. And then there's a comparison to the 2023 year, and then that yellow column on the right is prior to the pandemic, which, these were the years emphasized by DESI as well. So as you can see statewide, there's still quite a difference between 2024 and 2019. Oak Ridge for grades three through six, our ELA results are displayed here. I won't read through them all, but I mean, I'll give you a minute to digest them. So we are pleased to, could we go back to the Oak Ridge slide just briefly?
I'm sorry.
Pleased that in some areas, we are seeing a significant amount of recovery from the pandemic. We're very pleased with the SGP. I have to give a special shout out to our sixth grade team with a 71 student growth percentile is really outstanding. And then the achievement percentiles, this really helps to provide some context, is where do we stand in comparison to all of the other districts across the state? So for example, in third grade with a 60% achievement percentile that equates to, or to interpret that, is our third grade students performed at or above the level of 60% of other third graders across Massachusetts. These are the statewide results for the secondary level, so that's grades seven, eight, and We see a similar pattern with the 2019 difference. And these are the Sandwich Middle High School ELA results.
Okay, moving on to math, yes?
Can you go back to the Oak Ridge, well, I see the numbers for stats for the state across the board, you know, roughly minus 15 across the board. I'm looking specifically grade three. If I'm doing my math correctly, you know, they were not in school or entering kindergarten. They would, they would have been in pre-K in the spring of 2020, there would have been kindergarten of, you know, the, I guess that was the 50%, okay.
2021 school year.
I'm trying to think, where were they?
Yes, yeah.
As far as the impact. Do we think lightly here, kindergarten is obviously very important to get our kids the right start. Is it that found, do you think that disruption at the kindergarten level could carry forward this many years? Or is it something else? Hopefully I'm framing that question to make sense.
I, I do understand your question. I do think it's possible. I think a better indicator for us would be to compare our numbers of students in reading intervention in third grade now compared to how many students did we have in reading intervention in third grade in 2019, which I'm happy to get you that data, but I don't have it on hand tonight. I always find, I was a former third grade teacher, I always find it to be such a tough age to present them with this standardized test. Now clearly, the whole state is, it's, it's, to me, I think the third grade ELA test is particularly challenging because of the amount of writing done on the keyboard. So you're composing at the keyboard, and you're eight years old. It's, it's a challenge. I don't necessarily know that I would attribute it to the pandemic. It's a different cohort of kids, of course, so that's always a little bit hard to compare. It seems to us that sometimes the test seems to be getting harder and harder when you look at the state results there. They seem to go down every year. Yeah.
And I completely get it's one data point, I just want.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because we compare everything to 2019, so it's all pre-COVID.
Yep.
But is COVID, is COVID the driving factor there, or is it some other?
I mean, I think it could definitely be one of many factors.
Be closer to the mic, sorry.
Is any research being done about these young ones coming up and their use of screens versus the written word on paper? Books is what I'm talking about. I have a sample of one, which is a very precocious five-year-old in kindergarten grandchild. Get her to sit still for books is difficult.
I can speak to our in-district philosophy is Forestale is by far utilizing screens in terms of individual student devices far less than Oak Ridge and certainly, obviously, the secondary level. We don't utilize, you know, Google Classroom and that sort of thing and have kids, you know, they're still using pencil and paper as their primary materials. And, you know, we try not to, they do get on their Chromebooks on occasion for, you know, three times a year, they do the iReady test, and sometimes they play a math fact game or things of that nature. But it is, it's a challenge. I mean, it's just the whole engagement factor. I'm sure there will be studies certainly to come as to the effects of screen time, you know, and I'm sure it's not going to be very positive.
If they are using primarily pencil and paper, if they do have to take a test on a computer, then.
It's, it's, it's a real challenge. It's.
Yeah. Interesting.
When you get to third grade.
I'd add, as having one in that age of my own, the skillset that they're using on a regular basis at home and the types of tools that they're using are very different than when you go into the TestNav. And so there's a whole training that has to go through it, and it's not as intuitive to the student, to the children, as some of the other apps and tools are designed. I think there's a piece of that as well.
Interesting.
It's a, just to think of ourselves, you're in a, as much as we try not to make it a high-pressure situation, the conditions of an MCAS day are quite different than the conditions of the regular classroom day. There's a time limit, the whole room is silent, you know, it feels rigid. Well, our testing blocks, I mean, we do have students that, most of our students finish within a certain testing block, and then for students that go on throughout the day.
It's explicitly set, there used to be a time limit.
But just to clarify, so when our students, we have a testing block, let's say it's allotted roughly 90 minutes, and the vast majority of students in the room will finish. And then, yes, there are.
They are given more.
There are, there are students that might not finish in the 90 minutes, so then they would go to a separate setting, take a break, go to a separate setting and finish, but they have to finish that day.
Right, they do have to finish that day, but the time limit part is, I think, a little bit misleading.
I didn't mean to mislead you, I'm just saying that the structure of the classroom in that sense and having a, you know, the rest of your class is finishing, I think in your eight-years-old, it is a challenge.
It is, it's a completely different environment than a regular.
Let's let them go on with their.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So moving along to math, you'll see what the state would designate, anything plus or minus one percentage point is negligible, could be attributed to random chance. A little bit of a bump in grade three, but again, still trailing from where performance was in 2019 at the state. Just give you a minute to look through the Oak Ridge math results. Lot to celebrate here. Totally, fully recover from pre-pandemic. I think what's really, there's a lot of things that are phenomenal here, but the achievement percentile across the board is, you know, at or above the top third in the state. The SGP in sixth grade at 80, put it third amongst all sixth grade classes in the state, which is really phenomenal. And that achievement percentile of 95% is outstanding. I think that's a tribute to all of our educators, our coach, and even the folks at Forestale who set the table for this. So I just, I just want to commend our educators for some really fine work.
Can I just ask a quick question? Oak Ridge, last year they were honored for MCAS. Do you think they'll be an honor?
They were not, and it's a rotating honor, so their, their accountability percentile, I think, was identical this year as last year, so it's not necessarily a function of achievement.
Looks, the, the results look, they should be honored, so.
Yeah, I think a piece of it too is growth and improvement. So when they were honored last year, then they maintained that high level of achievement, but I think you also need to show improvement, so even greater growth.
And then looking statewide, a similar picture of flat achievement in seven, eight, and 10, again, still trailing our 2019. And then looking at our achievement in terms of the seven, eight, and 10, just give me a minute to take a look at that.
So going back to your point earlier, we haven't, the iReady at the middle school is in what, year two?
This was, so a couple of different points here with that. Last year was the first year where they were realistically using the iReady diagnostic with fidelity. The other thing we discovered in terms of getting curious is trying to figure out a supplemental instructional resource. So while the elementaries have the MyPath firmly in place to meet students where they are and help move them along, there is a bit of a challenge with the reveal curriculum and the iReady MyPath, and then finding something that fit with McGraw-Hill, which is Alex, which is used, as I found out in my visit to ForSEES in higher ed. In terms of going back to that theme of getting curious, we met with both the ELA department head and math department head, and coming up with a strategy of using those supplemental resources on a regular basis. It's an area of focus. We need to get more curious, dive deeper into the data. There's no necessarily discernible pattern last year in terms of one focal area. I think the SGP is candidly a cause for concern, also partially a function of like, you do really well in sixth grade, it kicks it up a notch. But again, it's an area to get more curious. What's, you know, a positive is, again, we're still strong relative to our peers, but again, just more area for focus and growth and to continue that effort that I know our teachers are putting in.
The science results statewide. And our Sandwich results are really something to celebrate.
And then pulling it all together is the accountability ratings, which DESI designates to each school, so it takes a look at some rolling data. So MCAS scores from 2023 and 2024, weighted access data, which is what we use to assess our multilingual learners, chronic absenteeism data, advanced coursework, so going back to the AP honor roll, that factors into your overall accountability ratings, our PLTW courses would as well. Our four-year cohort graduation rate for the middle high school would be part of that, but that note, that's 2022 and 2023. Annual dropout rate, and then extended engagement rate data from 2021, 2022. And then just accountability ratings, not requiring assistance and intervention across the board. Everything's in the 80th percentile. So again, whole picture holistically, again, another strong year from Sandwich Public Schools, but again, we're continued to continuous improvement.
Any questions, Kevin?
Just because you offered, Jen, and I don't want this to be a thesis or a research project, but if, if you could just, I'm curious about the third grade reading, if that, maybe it's just a harder test this year, maybe it's a one-off. Does it correlate with the other data you're seeing? I'd be interested, maybe either, you know, follow-up email from you or the soup, or maybe at a future meeting when you.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
Yeah, I do have a question. I guess I have to understand for myself and for the people at home, MCAS is not a ceiling, and it's not a floor. It's basic knowledge or a median knowledge. You can't equate a 10th grader's performance in MCAS to, say, an AP physics course. So, so that's to your point in terms of third grade reading, where I see we need to work is that these kids need to be at the medium to proficient level in these basic skills in order to consistently grow in the later grades.
Can I comment?
Sure. I don't know, I maybe.
I think what Jen and Dave have put together here is wonderful, and I like, even though I'm the guy, keep on pushing it to advance the slide really quickly, like, come on, let's move this. Their point about this is one snapshot in time, and genuinely, I really appreciate this committee's attitude and mindset toward MCAS. One thing that you have to be cognizant about, I do think MCAS is an important tool, which kind of dovetails with the next agenda item, but you'd also have to realize test design changes from year to year, and the cut scores change from year to year. So looking at that data, I'm really grateful that you guys bring up the growth data, the SGP. I'm grateful that you bring up the percentile, achievement percentile piece. And again, I don't like this, but I do think it's important to look at, okay, how are we doing relative to our peers across the region? And then also Jen brought up that whole, or Dave brought up the whole issue of DART districts, are similar districts demographically and population-wise. We're still doing relatively well, and I like that comparison because there is variability from year to year with regard to the test design and the cut scores. So I think that point is remarkably salient and needs to be made.
I just had a question with regarding special ed services. What are you receiving, what kind of information with the data-wise process to, you said, for the students that receive special ed services?
We can both, so I think what it did was it put a particular focus on the student experience, and how are we, and this ties into our next slide, but how is the co-teaching construct being implemented? What does specially-designed instruction look like? To what extent is small group instruction look like? And how do we ensure that there's consistency across the classrooms so that students are getting the similar experience? So I think going through this data-wise process drew us to math as an area of interest and need, and I want to commend the data-wise team that went to Harvard last year that sent us on this road out. Janet, I don't know if you have anything to add there too?
Yes, I would echo everything that Dave has said. I think we're fortunate that this, that MCAS is just one measure, and we're able to work with students from all different subgroups or students with all a variety of different services in different ways and have them showcase their learning beyond a standardized test, which might, for many kids, is not the best way that they can showcase their talents and their skills and their knowledge. I'm thrilled that the deeper learning initiative is taking hold. I think that's a wonderful opportunity for kids to show us their, their talents in other ways well beyond a computerized standardized test, right? So I think that that's a great opportunity for our students with special education plans as well as students without special education plans. So that's why it's important to keep, to keep. So that's why it's important to keep, to keep the MCAS in perspective.
And I think the other point that you've made also over the last few years has been these alternate assessments. This is not, this is one moment in time, whereas eye-ready is at intervals, and you're comparing the child to the child to the child.
Right. Their own personal growth, right.
Seen over time.
Three times throughout the year, right. We've probably all taken a standardized test and felt like, oh, maybe that wasn't my best day, but that's what happened that day, yeah.
I have an Iowa test flashbacks.
Exactly.
With special ed, do you?
I dated myself.
Do you know an approximation or a percentage of how many, how many students would be taking like a portfolio type of MCAS rather than your traditional MCAS?
We do have all of those, all of that data available, which I'm happy to forward that to you.
That would be great.
It's a smaller.
Smaller, smaller for the portfolio.
And it's, yeah, it's very restricted in terms of the type of special needs a student would have in order to be eligible for that alternative route.
I would say across the district, it's got to be less than 20.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but thank you. If you could send me that.
Sure.
Anything else? Bert?
Since we don't have a Sandwich teacher here, how do the teachers feel about MCAS? You can, why don't you represent them? I know the teachers that I deal with have no use for, mostly have no use for it, and they devote an awful lot of time in preparation, in tests, in MCAS-type testing preparation. And I forget who just said that the, I think it was Sue, that testing from day to day is much more reflective of their abilities. So how do the teachers feel about it?
So Dave and I did just meet with the Oakridge staff last Wednesday and review the results with that faculty. I would, to speak in generalizations, I don't think anyone loves the MCAS, right? In the sense that it's, you know, it disrupts the norm of the school day and just the whole formality of it, I suppose. I think they look at it with a nicely balanced perspective. I believe that our staff has the understanding that there is a degree of value to it in the sense that, you know, we're getting feedback on our own performance. I've had teachers, we present the data as a grade level, but I often have teachers email me individually and say, could you share my own data with me because I'd like to look at that to set my goal for this year? Like, what area might I want to focus on? I do not feel that we are heavy on traditional test prep. I know Dr. Quinn was in some classrooms this week, and we had a conversation afterwards, and he said to me, I've noticed the usage of academic vocabulary, phrasing of questions, emphasizing critical thinking versus, I've worked in districts in the past where we literally had test prep books, and it was like, this is what we do on Friday morning, everyone does test prep. I've never seen that in Sandwich. So I don't think that we're overly emphasizing the MCAS, but at the same time, it's, it is a public data point, and it's only fair to make our kids and teachers aware of, what is the test going to look like? What's going to be expected of you? But I don't believe we spend any more than maybe the week prior kind of reviewing that. Particularly with the use of technology, you have to review the tools with the kids, especially the little ones. So to that extent, it's more logistical, but we rely upon our day-to-day curriculum to teach the standards, and then the test assesses the standards. And that's where our emphasis is, really on the day-to-day curriculum.
Anything else? Thank you, as always, for a very thorough presentation. Appreciate it. And to all the staff and faculty who got us to this point.
Thank you both.
The next is discussion and vote on delegate and alternate to the MASCE annual meeting in November. So those, I don't know, anybody at this table going to the conference? I am. Tracy is? Bert, are you going? Oh, good, we can find a delegate here or two. So if you've attended before, there is, in the midst of all the wonderful workshops, there is a delegate assembly. And we received, and we have in the packet, a list of the resolutions that will be put forth at the conference. And those resolutions form the basis of their MASCE's legislative agenda for the next year. Also in the packet, there are 11 resolutions from, is it three prior years, four prior years?
Three.
Three.
The MASCE bylaws, should anybody from the floor during the meeting want to revive any of those expired resolutions, they can do so.
Or else they fall off the table only to be proposed another year. So it, it's an interesting process. You're watching democracy in action. If you can keep track of the amendments and all the motions, it's amazing to see what's going on there. But at any rate, it's a fascinating, it's educational, it takes a lot of time at the end of a long conference day. But I will entertain either volunteers or nominations for delegate, and we can do delegate first, and then we can do alternate. Is there a volunteer to be the delegate to the group?
I nominate Sue.
I decline.
I nominate Bert.
I decline.
I've done my service.
Okay. Who else is going?
I've done my service.
Tracy's going?
I nominate Tracy.
Do we decide this right now? Because I'm not 100% sure.
Well, then, I, does somebody want to make a motion? Can we motion to postpone?
Yeah, you could table it.
Yeah, let's just table it, and we'll do it on the 23rd.
Do we, can you do it on the 23rd? Do we want to table the resolutions as well? Or do you want to vote on the resolutions?
What is the wish of the body? Do we want to table the discussion of the motions? Or do we like to hear our superintendent's counsel on the motions?
I mean, you could hold till the 23rd, seeing that you have two members now.
Yeah, that's true. We wouldn't want to eliminate anybody from this discussion, so can I?
Where are you going to be on the 23rd?
Can I have a motion to table?
Yeah, we have two more people that we can get as a delegate.
I move that we, where the heck is it? I move that we table the discussion, the vote on delegate, and the Sandwich School Committee's view on the various resolutions until our 23rd October meeting.
Second.
Second by Bert, motion made by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor of tabling the motions, say aye. Aye, aye.
I should have just said.
Five, zero. It is tabled.
Agenda item 9B would have been a lot easier. That's all right.
Thank you. Okay. For the people at home, this is an important part of our role as members of the Mass Association of School Committees. And as they say, watching the sausage getting made and participating in that in terms of this process, democratic process, is not easy, but someone will do it. Thank you. Okay, next up, discussion, no, 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 let's see. So we're not voting on that. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair? I have none. Subcommittee reports, policy subcommittee.
Well, considering my other two members decided to not be here tonight, I guess this falls on me. So what we have is section G, and I did not really think that I was going to lead this, but just, this is the first reading. We're not voting on it tonight. We want to, we've, what we are doing as a policy subcommittee is we are looking at each section of the policy manual. Once we have reviewed the entire section of G and voted on what we think the changes should be, we forward it to the full committee, you know, as a section en masse. So, thank you, Joe. So I'm just going to do it very generally. What I would encourage each member to do is to take the time, like your subcommittee members have had, to go in and look at it. And most of this is minor, so, you know, there's, recaging my brain here, forgive me. So, you know, in the case of GA, if we consider it outdated, we think it should be removed. Some of them, if you look at, if you look at the policy manual as a whole, there's many cases where something is cross-referenced or touched on two, three, four times in different sections. And we're trying to remove the redundancy to reduce the weight of that binder that you get, and also just to make it clearer as a more useful and useful tool. Some have no changes. The, scroll back up one real quick. So, you know, I'll give you one example, gifts and solitiche myself, but Mass Policy is updated 22. It's much more specific, and it directly references the Mass General Law that governs, you know, those kind of things. So we recommended adopting that. It was more specific than our existing one. So I can try, do my best to answer any specific question, but what I would encourage folks to do is to go through, it won't take you all that long. If you use this graphic organizer, maybe, Joe, if you could send it out as a specific email, just so it pops in everybody's inbox, you can just open the existing, open the new, and you'll see the differences. If anybody wants to be in the policy subcommittee, it's a really good time.
This was, there's really two folders that are pretty extensive, G, which is personnel, and then J, which they're trudging through right now, which is student-related policies. So they're fairly lengthy, but there is a lot of attention to detail, as you can see through this graphic organizer. And I think this G alone was probably, what, Kevin, four sessions?
Oh, yeah.
Four to five sessions.
And there were numbers, I can't remember them specifically, a number of them that referred to either compensation or different things, and I would think subject to collective bargaining, particularly for unit members.
If it was in a contract and governed by collective bargaining, we got rid of it because it just, it's a point of confusion. And obviously, the contract's going to take precedent anyway, so.
That was helpful.
If it didn't add value, we got rid of it. So that's all I have. And again, it's really, it's kind of a homework assignment for our next meeting.
Right. Anything else on policy? Any other subcommittees that have met?
I'm on a roll. So just prior to this meeting at 5:00 PM, the finance subcommittee met, where we, just like the Board of, the Select Board reviews and approves the schedule of fees that the town charges, whether it's a dump sticker or a beach pass or whatever, we have fee schedules for use of our facilities, and we have different classes of people that might use it. Class one is basically school teams and school, other school entities which are free of charge. We have class two, which are 501-3C nonprofits in the community that are 100% in support of the Sandwich community, some of our sports leagues, scouts, things like that. They have a different fee schedule than, say, a private entity that might be for-profit that wants to rent either the, not arena.
Stadium?
Well, the stadium, but.
Fields?
Auditorium, thank you. I just completed, keep blank, you know. Last summer, we had a dance company from New Jersey that was a for-profit company that rented our school for a week. Well, they pay a different rate than the nonprofit in town. I think that makes sense to everybody. The subcommittee's approach to the, so we've, we reviewed a fee schedule, we approved it at the subcommittee level, it'll come to the full committee for approval. And the idea is that we would add this to the great calendar of agenda items, and we would review it every year. Because from a governance fiduciary responsibility, I think it's the right thing to do, and it's consistent with our partner board at the Select Board. One caveat to it, there are a couple, what we, I think we call the term super users. We have a couple of sports leagues that extensively use our facilities, that an hourly rate is really kind of problematic, or just doesn't make good sense for them to manage. Our approach to that was, because they are a 501-3C and they are supporting our kids, that as a community partner, our mission should be to break even, i.e., we should charge them a fee such that any costs that the schools incur are covered. We shouldn't, you know, in my simple terms, we should not make a buck off of, say, Sandwich Youth Across, or Sandwich Youth Basketball, or Sandwich Little League, but we should not, the school should no way underwrite them either. It should be, it's never going to be a perfect science, but, or a perfect amount, but a good faith effort to break even. So, and for those cases, the policy will allow the superintendent to enter an agreement with those organizations. And that would be something that would be reviewed by the business manager, approved by the superintendent. So, but you'll see in more detail at the next meeting.
Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, we can't wait for the next part of that discussion.
Where are you going to be on the 23rd again?
All right. Any other liaison or advisory committee reports? Danielle?
Just a quick update about the Special Parent Advisory Council. The next meeting will be held on Zoom Tuesday, October 22nd at 6:30. It's going to be the Basic Rights Workshop for Families presented by Christine Riley from Cape Cod Advocate. So there'll be emails sent out as well as on the Facebook page of CPAC. So Tuesday, October 22nd, 6:30.
Thank you. Any others?
The Sandwich High School PTSA is still looking for volunteers to help set up for the Halloween setup at Oakridge, at Heritage. That is the week of the 21st to the 25th of October. They've been pushing it out via their email strings and their various social media feeds. This is an awesome, this is one of those awesome community events that makes you really be happy to live in Sandwich, but it doesn't happen, it can't happen on the back of too few people. So if you have a few hours that week, please reach out to the PTSA, sign yourself out, sign yourself up and lend a hand. I think you'll be glad you did. It's a lot of fun, and it's a great community event, and it raises a whole ton of money for the junior and senior class to make prom a reality.
Thank you. Any other announcements, or not announcements, committee reports? None? Okay, moving along to warrants. Can I have a motion to approve the warrants?
I move that we approve the warrants as presented and signed by a majority of the school committee.
Second. Second by Danielle, motion made by Kevin. Any discussion? I have a question, Michelle, just briefly, I don't need dissertation on it, but I saw one expenditure related to ESER III. How much longer can bills be submitted, or?
The accounting for ESER III closed on September 30th.
Okay.
The encumbrance to be in place, you will see invoices like come in as the items have to be paid for, but everything was spent by September 30th.
By 9:30. Thank you very much. Okay, can I, let's see, all in favor of approving the warrants? Say aye.
Aye.
Bert, did I see?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Five, four? No opposition, it, they pass. Thank you. Let's see, to our second public forum, anybody wish to be heard at public forum? Seeing no one, thank you. Moving along, future agenda items? I do not have any. Does anyone have any future agenda items? Tracy?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if at some point in time, we can learn a bit more about what Mr. Dorney was bringing to our attention with what is happening.
The e-buses and the applications.
Yeah, and maybe that information is somewhere and it's easy to find, but if we could discuss it, that would be great.
Yeah, I have a lot of information on that.
Okay.
It's very exciting that Sandwich is being named a green community, too. That was a lot of hard work over the last few years.
It was.
Yeah. I just had a question. When are we getting the athletics update from the middle high?
Next meeting, October 23rd. Next meeting, October 23rd.
Okay.
A barn burner.
It's going to be a meeting.
Honestly, and I say this with peace and love, the agenda is done already, okay? Like with the carryover stuff from this meeting and to have a substantive conversation. So we're at one hour and 27 minutes? Just saying.
Just on the future items and the athletic update, if we could ask Sean to make some mention about safety, head injury prevention.
Yes.
Equipment, guardian helmets for the football team, that kind of thing. That would be great. Thank you. Acknowledgements and closing remarks. Any acknowledgements?
I just want to acknowledge Dr. Quinn, actually, just to embarrass him because he's sitting here. We heard from our student rep about the finish trip. We heard from, at public comment, what a great kind of community thing that was. We saw it in, in your superintendent's report. You can get a sense of what kind of experience those kids had. They even got to see Sandwich Fest, believe it or not, on a beautiful, you know, New England fall day. There was a lot of teachers involved that made it happen, but really, the genesis of, of the idea came from Dr. Quinn. And it would not, this, this whole thing would not happen without him. So I just want to publicly say thank you.
And I would like to thank you. And the world of digital conferencing makes this such a robust experience, where the relationships have been built before they even get here. But Sandwich is, in its past, has had a rich tradition of student exchanges of various kinds. They've kind of gone away for a while. So I hope that this type of project can continue because more people can participate. So thank you very much.
Are you going with them?
No. Thank you, Dave.
One of the things the kids did mention is they are very happy that Finland is part of NATO. And, because I did talk to them about that, and they're very happy about that.
I also wanted to thank the host families that opened their houses, that turned their lives upside down for a little while, having extra bodies in their house. It's a lot of work, so thank you to all of the host families.
I'll make sure.
They build lifelong friendships, I will guarantee you.
I will make sure you get at least one postcard from one of the travelers.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move that we adjourn to executive session per MAS general law, chapter 30A, section 21, for reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, that being the superintendent of schools. The committee will not reconvene in open session.
Can I have a second? Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning to executive session? Aye, 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 unanimous, five, zero, passed. Thank you very much.